All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Woodbury to the village board meeting in September 28, 2023. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for the victories and rust crash on Route 84 last night?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, with all its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, so before I begin with introductions, I would just like to let everyone know this is our sixth month to St. Patty's Day meeting, St. Patrick's Day meeting. Apparently Chris Graziano did not get the memo.
No, at 2:00, yes.
At 2:00?
No excuses.
All right, well, I'm grimace. Doesn't he have like a shamrock shape or something? Grimace.
All right, as I'm doing every meeting, let me begin by introducing your village board trustees. So starting at I Far End, who wore purple today, is trustee Christopher Graziano. Next to him, trustee Victor Alley, who apparently got the memo. Joining us from her, her summer home in Sis Musjaw Saskatchewan is deputy mayor Tara Bjork. And to my right is everyone's favorite village clerk, Desiree Poppen, and wearing green noise. Okay, so, oh, I'm the mayor of the village of Woodbury, Andrew Jackman. Thank you so much. All right, let me begin by, public hearings continue. Introductory local law eight of 2023. What's going on? ARB revisions. A public hearing is being continued from the June 27 meeting to the penitentiary comments on introductory local law eight of 2023, amending the village code, chapter eight, architectural review board, and chapter eight, 314, architectural review board rules, to review and clarify the guidelines and standards of the architectural review board. So at this time, let me start the law. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on local law eight? Okay. Attorney Norton?
I mean, I don't have any further comments. We revised this several times based on comments received from the public, comments received from the board.
Okay, and then Michael Penellas' comments this afternoon?
Mike Penellas' comments this afternoon really just to clarify two provisions that were potentially in conflict, just to make them go the same, that no grading will be required that requires the use of fill or retaining wall grade and force the in height to make the area of the deck and or edge adjustable. So it would just be consistent in those two provisions.
All right, any comments from the board?
So are you changing something that you said?
I'm gonna change it, but I think it's self consistent.
Okay. I just need to send it to the state tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, going back out to the public. Hey, local law eight, we're looking for comments on the ARB law. So anyone in the public wishing to speak? Go ahead, introduce yourself like, like your first time here.
My change is bridge preservation. I'm sorry, we're on ARB.
Okay, ARB, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Adrian Wilson, I live here in Woodbury. I'd like to comment on the ARB, the proposed amendments to the ARB law. First, I'd like to understand, the ARB intent was so the houses are uniform. The way I read the current code is that it only applies to houses as part of subdivisions. When you have an individual house on a random, I don't know, lot of, or list of, you're not supposed to be, supposed to be subjected to the ARB. Is that the case?
Is that the case, Kelly?
There are specific provisions, I'm just trying to pull them up now, as to when the architectural review board is required. And that is in eight dash four B, buildings that require, buildings in alterations that require a building permit on any lot that was part of a subdivision approved by the planning board on or after the January 1st of 1990, or is otherwise subject to the original preservation regulations.
Okay, so you just confirmed what I just stated, that only if you are part of a subdivision, or if you are subjected to bridge preservation law. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Currently, the way it works is each and every house, if those are part of the planning board, is subjected to ARB. I think that's wrong, that should be clarified.
Okay.
That's not in the code, and this was...
The majority of the houses that have come before the planning board require ARB because they were parts of subdivisions that comply with this code or are otherwise subject to bridge preservation.
Okay, so...
Usually the building department and the chairman.
I, so, so like, HLE, like where I live, that was a subdivision built in 1997, so that would be a subdivision that still involves even today, you know, building.
Yeah, there's, houses that are like in Woodbury, 28, on Seven Springs Road, and that's five subdivisions, and they still have to go through the ARB process.
So is that, is that true, like, so individual house, anywhere else in Woodbury? That's not part of a development, say like Woodbury Junction, or HLE, or McPity Green?
If it's also otherwise subject to the bridge preservation, so I can't really say on these particular lots, because I don't know if they're subject to bridge preservation.
Okay, but, but, bridge preservation has different guidelines as ARB. ARB, because it has to be uniform, they require, you have to give them like, it can be, it has to be within the same, the square footage has to be within the same range as the neighbors. That's different than, why, like, there's a house on, on, on Seven Springs, I'm using that as an example. You want the bigger, big house, it's, it's, it complies with the bulk of zoning, you comply with the zoning. But ARB, following, you have to downsize it because your next door neighbor is not, is not as, has a smaller house. You should not be subjected to these guidelines and to these rules.
No, I mean, stop there again, I'm just trying to help figure out this. So, Seven Springs Road, because it's basically almost level with Maine, and HLE, power being in bridge preservation.
Probably, I'm just...
That's what the exception is.
I understand, but ARB serves, the architecture review board serves to judge the, the guidelines of the...
Of course. No, I understand what you're saying, I'm just trying to get, figure out why. I'm just looking to see what the LR is. Okay, now back over, like, we still have a court, right? Okay, all right, so, what you're saying is the beginning of the law states that if the property is subject to bridge preservation, then automatically under that law comes subject to ARB?
Yeah.
No, it has to go under the architecture review board, but it's not subjected to ARB. So you don't have a separate board to review, to review bridge preservation? So you use the planning board as a, not a dual purpose, as a, as a, as a, they wear three hats. They have what they're planning, which is site approval, bridge preservation, and ARB. So, like, yes, architecture review board is the one, but architecture review board law has different guidelines. Because it's part of a subdivision, they want to look uniform. So they don't want one house to be a mansion next to a relatively smaller house. But what they're doing is, they're taking those guidelines and applying throughout the village. Because the way it is now, 95% of people are subjected, are subject to bridge preservation, because only people in the valley, like literally on the 32, are not subjected. Everyone else, you start going in line on both sides of the 32, you have to go into preservation. So everyone ends up in the ARB, and they are applying those rules across the board, which is wrong.
I ask a second, well, this will be a fourth question, legal question. The revisions we're making, if I read them correctly, which I may not have, so that's why I'm asking. Even if you're in bridge preservation, it doesn't necessarily, with the revision, have to go through bridge preservation if the building inspector's permit is not proven, that it's not in the view board. Is that correct?
So there are additional exemptions, I would say, in these local laws, that the buildings, that the applications will come into the building department, and the building department will say whether or not, you know, we have to go before the planning board based on X, Y, and Z, whatever the laws are, and if it's of a certain size, I forget how this actually works, that...
What, open?
Excessive growth area, inappropriateness, poor quality of sign, et cetera, things like that. There's reasons why they come before the board, but this gives them additional exemptions, so that not every application has to come before the ARB. But a lot of the applications do, as are noted, as is noted, based on bridge preservation and the timing of the situation.
I guess what I'm really trying to ask is, if, one of the exemptions is, if it's per the building inspector's record, that the building department is not in the view board, or, so then it's not subject to bridge preservation, that automatically now, again, exempted from ARB?
If it's a new house, no, but if it's a, an addition to an existing house, then there are perfidits, they can't be exempt, and it allows for the addition?
A new house isn't that part of a subdivision. It's, and it's the valley, so it's not subjected to bridge preservation, but they still have to go in front of the ARB.
Okay, so a new house, honestly, I have to, I'd have to look at an application like that. I, I can't give you an, an exact answer.
I'm trying to get to...
I mean, if you have a, if you have a house that's supposed to not be a subdivision from 1990, and it's in a valley, and it's not visible from the ridge corridor, it's likely that it wouldn't be subject to ridge preservation in ARB, but again, without seeing the particular application, I really can't give you a definitive answer.
So we don't have any language in there that even sort of feels...
So, so, so let's take a step forward, then. Let's say he is in the ridge preservation because he is higher than the section of elevation, so he's subjected to going in front of the ARB. Is he now subjected to all the rules of ARB? Not bridge preservation, bridge preservation has its own rules, there has to be natural tone, color, stuff like that. But talking about not ARB rules, is he subjected to that as well?
Yeah.
Why? But he's not part of a subdivision?
If he's part of ridge preservation, the code currently says...
So this is what I'm trying to present to the board. This has to be clarified, it's wrong. If I'm not, if I'm not part of a subdivision, why should I be subjected to the rules of ARB? This is not how it was meant to be, but this is in effect how it is applied to the planning board currently.
No, I mean, I just, I never, I never thought of that.
No, I mean, there's, there's a lot of overlap in there, when you look at things like the ARB, the architectural review, the exterior of the structure, and ridge preservation, where you're able to view it.
Right.
You're viewing the exterior of the structure, so I think when they were initially adopted, and when the boards discussed them, you are really looking not too much for uniformity, but so that the houses are not dissimilar, or overly dissimilar, or overly similar, that they don't stand out adversely in terms of size or appearance, and they sort of tie in together. So, which reviewing the exterior of the structure, I don't...
So in fact, what happened, you have the zoning part two, you have the two acre lot, you have a lot to build, I don't know, 20,000 per feet, I don't know, just... But in effect, you can't do that, because ARB comes in, and they tell you, no, you can't do that. So, in effect, ARB is legislating their own zoning.
I disagree with that.
Uh, Kelly, other question, where does the ARB fall in line with a self-development that has an HOA that has an ARB?
That's separate, so if there's an HOA, and whatever rules that HOA has, has, that's separate. The property first has to comply with the underlying zoning. On top of that is, you know, any other zoning or rules or restrictions that you have, and if somebody bought in an area that has an HOA, that's just on top of it, so that property privately would also be subject to those regulations, but the village can only manage the underlying ground. So it would still be subject, in the first instance, to the village's ARB, regardless of whether or not the HOA had an ARB.
So, in the outskirts of town, in the outskirts of town, you've got a lot of these old homes out there. Okay, and they've been in front of the zoning and planning board before. So, I, I don't want to put words in it, but those houses, if somebody buys them, and they're gonna tear them down and build a new house, it is not gonna look like anything like it's on carpet on the block, because the entire area is being rebuilt. Newer families coming in, and larger families coming in, but the, those houses on that side of town are just, they need to come down. So it's very difficult to, um, kind of legislate that they would be different than anything else that's currently on the, the block there, because everything is going to be bigger when somebody else buys it. So that would all be subject to...
It would be subject to, if it, if it falls into these categories, it would be subject to ARB and/or ridge preservation. A lot of those projects that have come before the board, the ones that I'm familiar with, are raising the houses and presenting much prettier than many houses. But they lose their pre-existing non-conformity for the most part, so a lot of them are oversightly underlying zoning anyway. But the planning board, at least what I've witnessed, is understanding the neighborhood that they're in, they're asking for some that are within that area, but usually they have a radius of about three.
So, if you're building a new house, does it have to go to the planning board regardless?
Right now, yes, because...
No, no, be outside the ARB, I'm just telling you.
Unfortunately.
If you, if you don't look at the ARB or the ridge preservation, you would just get a building tenant for a single tenant.
All right, so new, brand new houses don't need to go to the planning board outside, if, if the ARB...
Unless they need ARB, you would send them to the...
Listen, that unless, it kills it for everyone, because 95% of people fall within one of these two categories.
Now, I hear what you're saying, I'm just trying to get...
This is, this is what, this is what happened two and a half years ago. So, up to two and a half years ago, when you amended this law, it used to be that the code enforcement officer, they, they served, I don't know, I'm sure, maybe, I think they served with the ARB, the architectural review board, not just the ridge preservation?
I know, the building inspector didn't serve in either of those capacities, he just really was the filter, like the building department is now, as to whether the application was...
So what happened was, I guess he filtered out enough that didn't end up in front of the planning board. What's happening now is, almost, almost all the applications ended up in front of the planning board. So what happened, what happened, and having now, is it's clogging the system, and wants to wait so much longer. And, and, and it's, we feel it's totally unnecessary, and I don't think this is what this, this law was intended to be.
Does the amendment run the end?
The, the amendment does, the amendment actually provides for much greater additions and revisions to the properties that can, that will fall now into the building inspector's hands to make those fall. If he gets one that falls within these parameters, but he still thinks that it really needs to go to the planning board, that's in his discretion. But this allows a lot more applications to go through just the building department to make those difference.
Yeah, it allows, it's, it's, again, if I'm reading, if I read it correctly, so, like, up to a 1500 square feet extension, would, would be in the building department discretion now, doesn't that go into my area?
Well, we're, but, but we're still going back to new houses.
One at a time, I'm trying to get...
No, we just, I'm trying to still establish what the law currently is.
Me too.
But which, this applies to additions, so in addition is to an existing house.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get through, it's, it doesn't really, any of the...
No houses.
New house issues.
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get.
So it's still gonna clog the building department, because every new house now has to go in front of the planning board, and this is not how it used to be, two and a half years ago.
So every house in Woodbury Junction, that's built, because there's gonna be houses on top of houses, it's gonna be a ton of houses going through that system, right?
So we can even have...
Those have subdivision ARB approvals, so they don't have to go, unless you modify it, because they have like 10, 10 approved models. If you build within those 10 models, you're good, if you modify it, then you have to go back in front of the planning board as the architecture review board.
Pretty much all of the houses have to go before ARB unless it's one of those 10 models that's approved. So those houses are allowed to just get a building permit because those models are approved, but the houses, some of the houses that are coming in are substantially revised from what was previously moved, so that hasn't been considered by the...
So...
Is there any provision for exemption at all, if they're not viewable in the ridge corridor, it's good to the ARB or not, for new houses?
For, I don't believe, no, not if they're part of a subdivision, I would think.
No, no, okay, outside of subdivisions, subdivision not part of the subdivision.
If they're in the, if they're above elevation 600, even though they're not in the view corridor, you still have to go in front of the planning board. You have to prove to them that you've not seen, and then they still judge you as ARB, because once you're in front of them, they still apply all the rules.
And I think that's the rub at the end of the day, is that it's, it's a longer process. The entire thing, where you gotta go through ARB, you gotta, it's, it's all the fees attached with this, and I think at the end of the day, that's probably where you're getting at, is that it is, now you're adding X amount of time to this entire process to build one home, or renovate a home, or put an extension on, or something like that.
I mean, I think this is a good start to allow some additional big exemptions, but if you want to, basically, I think, I think what's being suggested, and I don't want to put words in your mouth either, is to kind of untie these from each other. I can, I can take a look at that, and then I can see how that impacts the whole process going forward, and where I think that would actually impact the village. Do you want to take a look at that?
Maybe, maybe it's worth looking at, and you can't wait another week, or two, whatever, another meeting?
Yeah, I agree with you. But if you wanted to go forward with the extension, you could do that too, and then you could do the untie, et cetera, or you could wait two weeks then?
If we're gonna do anything else to this one, we're gonna do it all at once, I don't want to piece it up with that.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't want to speak to everybody else, I just don't want to piece myself something to death, I want it to, do it, do it once, and get it correct.
I like the things correct, but then, there's always these examples that we can never imagine, and then it's like, oh...
Let's get it corrected to us.
So right now, if my neighbor has a colonial, and I want to build a model looking house, they're thinking, no, you can't do that, because it doesn't look, it's not uniform. Even though I'm not, I'm not part of a, a, a subdivision.
And I, and I, and I can understand your thought process, and that is, my particular house is only one that looks like it might have developed. I have a completely different house, anybody else might have.
No, but it's a subdivision, I get, I, I get it, if you want it to look the same, a part of the development, but if I'm on my own flat.
No, I get, I agree.
I have a different taste than my neighbor, why wouldn't I be allowed to, to build differently?
So you're really thinking of the properties, I'm just looking at a map of Woodbury, like the upper left, that area where a lot of the tear downs...
You think we're looking to Oakland, uh...
Central Avenue, Oakland, Midtown.
You have, you have Big Tim, HLE, Conchihalau, let me be Woodbury Junction, Greens, you got these, most of the others are, are subdivisions, you got private houses.
Oh, okay, that part between Gunderberg and there's the...
If that would be Midland, that would be Oakland, that would be Morgan Court, that would be...
Those are subdivisions.
Those were some of the...
Well, I, I don't...
Okay, where, it was before 1990.
How, what is a subdivision?
Well, no, we have some subdivision since 1990.
1990, those were subdivision in the back in 1970. Yeah, so it's still subdivision. I, I mean, just because something was in.
I'm sorry, why don't I take a look at where this suggestion would potentially apply?
Okay.
It would be very difficult to do for the entire village, but if I'm getting it, kind of like an area that the villagers are really thinking about it, where a lot of this is happening, I can take a look to see if it can be untied, if it even, if it wasn't untied, would that change anything? I can think of that.
And do I approve this law now, and then just amend it afterwards, or do I just hold off on this?
So if you hold off on this, if, if you approve it tonight, you'll have to have another introduction, see if there are referrals.
Okay, so then, just gonna take...
I don't want to just drop this out, though.
Right, or you can, but I do think if, if you are gonna make changes, that you would want to adjourn it to the next meeting, that way you can comment on whatever the thing is.
I, I need this off our plates, it's, and off your plate.
I mean, that would be great, but I want the boards to be happy with what you're adopting.
Okay.
I would, okay, I would suggest we take one more meeting, and take one more look at it.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Do you have any other comments on ARB?
I, the ARB, I don't, but I have the rich law, so...
Rich, you wanna stick, you can stand there, because I'm just gonna close it on...
I don't want to give a chance to others to address it.
Oh, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Anybody else on ARB?
Maria Hunter, just a thought on the ARB process. I do know when ARB was approved for ridge preservation, great, um, they were taken into consideration, it is non-glare glass, so that someone on the other side of the mound, who are hard as it shines with the sun, also colors of roofs and colors of, that in ridge preservation of ARB, met, you blend it in with your area, so this ARB, when it comes to colors or the non-glare windows, I think we should keep that, because it does help our neighbors, because we have booming mountains on either side, and if the sun's shining in a certain direction, you can get blinded, because sometimes if the sun is shining, it reflects back upon, especially from the east to the west, so just kind of keep those thoughts in your mind about the ARB.
Anyone else? All right, uh, all right, well, if we do this, if we're gonna carry it over. So can I, motion in second to hold those of the public hearing to our October 12 meeting?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move on. Introductory local law nine, 2023, bridge preservation, public hearing is being continued from the June 22 meeting to entry of public comments on introductory local law nine of 2023, amending the village code, chapter 3 to 10 zoning, to clarify the guidelines and standards of ridge preservation review.
So this is actually the change that the building inspector had, because this is the...
Okay, so we're gonna add that in there, okay. I'll open it up to the public. Starting in the background.
Hi, my name is Adrian Wilson, I live here in Woodbury. I'd like to have some comments on the proposed amendment, the local law number nine. So again, as was pointed out earlier, right now, almost everyone's subjected to this law, and there is no real avenue for exemptions, except coming in front of the board. I'd really like the board could look at something, like if you're not in the view board, or you should, you should, this is something the code officer can easily do.
Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the word you just said, I apologize.
Like was pointed out earlier, the current law doesn't allow for any exemptions. The way the process works, you have to go in front of the planning board, you have to get out of the agenda, you have to wait, take your time, pay for professionals to come down, present a case. It's all, I think, very unnecessary, this is something that easily be done by the code officer. Make determination, if he's not part of the new corridor, he should get the exemption by the, this is one count. And, and in terms of the proposed exemptions, so this actually brings back to what I just mentioned. So additions to the walling that are not visible from the new corridor. If you are not visible from the new corridor, you should not be subjected to this law to begin with. What we're trying to do is, even you, under normal circumstances, you are subjected to this law, if it's just an addition, you should get the exemption. So the idea should be, even if it is in the new corridor, you should get the exemption.
Is that what it said, no?
It is what it said, so, but, but, and I think that somebody has to make that determination, and it, obviously, it's not gonna be the homework, because everybody's taken on it, so this puts that determination in the hands of the building inspector and the ARB, except that prevents you...
Well, that is changed.
That is, that is...
What?
The extensions, the building...
No, it's not really. Because, 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 because you have to be not visible from the view corridor, if, if you are visible from the view cor... If you're not visible, okay, it is changed, it's, it is changed to a certain degree, because it is changed if you're not visible, but if you're visible, you still, even what the extension is not, you all went in front of.
Well, being visible and, and ridge preservation, all together.
No, but the idea is, if you have an existing house, let's say even if it's white, it's against the code. Planning board, to this date, as far as I know, has never enforced this. They're allowed some, because they understand, it's an existing house, it's been used existing material, even if it doesn't comply, they're not gonna make you change everything, so that same logic should, should, should apply, even if, even if it's visible. If you have an existing house, you're not gonna make one side white and the other side very natural tones, you're just gonna, there's gonna be yellow and white.
Well, that makes sense.
So what's the point of making it go in front of the planning board? If it's what Maria pointed out about the glare glass, that's in the code, so that's something the building inspector can enforce. That's actually in the ridge preservation code, so that's something the, the building inspector, when you've used the plants, you can make sure it's not glaring, non-glaring glass.
It all goes back to less in front of the planning board, and quicker, this thing's happening quicker.
I understand, I think that, again, a 1500 square feet in the aggregate is, is a very large extension. It is subject to different conditions, and that have to be met, but it does put it back in the hands of the building inspector, and it might be something that you want to start with, a 1500 square feet, and then if that works, I mean...
I just finished one more clarification, please, I write these three times, but I just want to make sure. If the house itself is in the new corridor, or is in bridge preservation corridor, for a second, but the extension of the building will not be visible, does that, under this new law, exempt it back to the building department if the extension itself is not visible regardless of the regular housing?
If the addition to the principal walling is not visible, where they have submitted sufficient proof to the code enforcement officer, which is less than or equal to an increase in the existing structure of fifteen hundred square feet in the aggregate.
So it, it doesn't matter if the house itself is viewable, if the extension is not, the extension goes into the woods, and we're never gonna see it.
And you're never gonna see it as long as they comply with these conditions, and they prove it to the building inspector, it's in his hand.
Okay, so I think that's what you're asking for.
I'm asking for an addition, that even if it's viewed from the, the view corridor, since the planning board doesn't, it's not gonna make you change it. So what's the point of going in front of the planning board?
You, you want to go for the planning board.
If it's in the view corridor, if it's in the bridge and you...
If you can see the addition in the view corridor, it should technically go before the bridge preservation board, because it's not just a code. You have to do this roofing, there's all kinds of other things, that you have to make sure complies with the bridge preservation code.
But whatever's the code, the code enforcement officer can, 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 can...
But if you, I mean, there's parts of it, I said this before, there's parts of it where I'm not, I don't do it, but, you know, but, um, if you don't see the extension, it gives you the exemption, it gives you the exemption. It doesn't matter if you see the house, you don't see the extension from the view corridor. If you put an extension in the back of your house and you can't see it, put this back to the woods, and the code enforcement officer can say, yes, go ahead, and you don't have to go to work. If you can only see the front of the house, you can do it.
But that brings me to my next point, so the addition shall not be visible from the side of principal walling facing the street. Right? No, because it can tie into what you just said. When you build a fifteen hundred foot extension, there's no way it's not gonna be seen from the side.
I don't understand, that one I didn't understand.
Oh, from the side of the principal wall that faces the street, so...
So like me in the front of the house?
Yes.
Yes, but I couldn't put the front of the house, because some of the houses are like this. So I have to say the side of the house that faces the street, not the side of the house, the side of the house that is...
All right, so, that's another question. What if the house is on like her?
Yeah. There's two things.
And you can see the side in the front.
Of the building inspector, I don't need to know how, who would clarify that, because it's measured from the radius of the, how we go.
Because I read the parts about the dax in my name, and I'm like, if you pull my driveway, you can see my deck. If you, what I'm just, if, but is it directly in front of the house? I go, here's my house, and I'm standing right here, as long as I can't see it on the side, I'm good. But what if I drive up the street and now I can see it? Is that different?
It would, well, it would, first of all, it would really depend on how the building inspector would read this. I can't say exactly how, but my guess, and he is on, so if he wants to correct me as to my guess, is that he would stand in front of the house, that is inside the house that is facing the street, and if he can see it...
That makes so much more sense to me, directly in front of the house makes much more sense to me than you can...
If you're like down the street and look...
That makes much more sense to me.
But that's not how it's voted.
But it's not voted, it's probably...
But even if it's standing in front of the house, most of the time, when you do a fifteen hundred foot extension, it's not gonna be just in the back. The world come, the, the extension will extend to the side. Then, that, that pretty much negates the whole point.
Well, it makes it better than I thought, because I thought you couldn't see it at all from the side of the house, and I go...
And in addition, sometimes, it's the back of the house, let's say, WPT, some of those houses, it's actually the back of that house that faces the, the view corridor, and not even the front.
Most of the time, actually.
Yeah.
And Kelly, we talked about that with my house beyond her. So if I'm standing in front of my house, you can't see the deck. But if you come around her, you can see into my backyard, you can see the deck, and it's facing the street percent. So that's, there's a great area there.
I can try and come up with some language to clarify that. I can try and come up with some language to clarify it. It, it's very difficult, especially if you live on her. But let me see if I can, um, put my finger in that.
And I can understand to a point why the rule is the way it is, because I understand what your point is too, you might want to go and ask the back of the house a little bit to the left or the right, but also it prevents someone from building a wacky triangle on the side of the house that makes something, that makes it look really weird. You know, you could build something really strange, like sticks out of the side of your house. And somebody could build an extra now, like a triangle, something really strange, this prevents that from happening. So I get what you're saying, but I also get the spirit of what the rule is trying to say as well. I, I understand what you're saying.
First of all, that, that should be stated, then if it's from the view corridor, not the side of the street, the street, seeing from the street is irrelevant, the point is so you don't see it from, from the block.
No, what I'm trying to say is, you're driving down the street, you don't want to see a house with a triangle on the side of it.
But that's not with the bridge, that's now we're getting back to ARB.
Oh, you got a point there.
No, there, there are, there's just...
I'll take it out.
That's correct, there are elements of the exterior walling that are considered under bridge preservation. Just want to make that out.
I know, I, I get, it's confusing.
But I will take a look at clarifying this provision.
Unfortunately, we're arguing now with, it seems like semantics, but all this has real effects in the real world on people.
No, and we, and, you know, as far as we, you know, with the, all the local laws we face, we listen to what people have to say, and we look at it, and see what we can, can, or what we can't, but to shorten my goals, and we, we held it four or five weeks, because we got a lot of public comment, and changed the rule about four times before we went through that, and so I think, you know, I think it's something we, we'll, we'll take to heart what he said, and we'll talk to Kelly, and we'll talk to Mike.
The underlying point is, we have to try, only in the most extreme circumstances, you should have to go on the planning board. The idea should be, as many people should not have to go on the planning board. Right now, it's cute, everyone has to go.
So, we heard you, and my part suggests, my suggestion was the table, the wall, the ground, and we'll get it again. And I'm gonna make the same, I would suggest you now, I mean, that's one. And I might speak to the building inspector, and speak to the planning chair, and I can get a little opinion, and get something, and see what's workable, what's not, and to be fair to everyone, and that's all I'm gonna look at with it. But that would be my suggestion, just to that. Okay. So we hold over, was there any other comments on ridge?
That's it, so, pretty much, I was, yeah, I pointed out that if you see the, from the side of the street, if you don't meet this, then you don't get this exemption, and almost no one is going to.
So it'll be back in front of the planning board.
Correct.
Okay. So we have, we heard what you said, you have, you have it written down, right?
I did my best, very hard.
It's on tape.
And it's on tape, so, I'm sure Kelly got what she needed to get.
Would you be opposed to sending in written, written, I'm not there, and you put an email?
I can certainly put something together.
And send it in, and say, this is our objection, so it's in writing, so we don't...
I can't, that's gonna be a little tough.
Not tomorrow.
Tomorrow, it's, it's a holiday, so, uh, sometimes I should, sometimes I should...
And we can have that by certain remedies, I don't want to prolong this anymore, because I'm gonna be done.
We really appreciate your time, listening.
And this way, if it's a writing, we don't miss anything, and we have to take a look at it, and see what it is. And don't miss a perfect one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion in a second to ca, to carry over the public hearing to our October 12th meeting? All right, actually, wait a minute, anyone else in the public wishing to speak on ridge preservation, local law nine? All right, have a motion in a second to hold over the public hearing to our October 12th meeting. Motion, second. All in favor? Okay. That's it. All right. So we had, next up is moratorium waiver request, so we had two of them, one for 140 route 32, and the other one for a 96 turn a row. We have two waiver requests scheduled this evening for relief as it contains the current moratorium. Those applications have been withdrawn by the applicant for both these waiver requests. Good. So no further business from this board. All right, moving on to the public hearings, introductory local law seventeen of 2023, titled Hotel Occupancy Tax. Public hearing is being held, maintain public comments on introductory local law seventeen of 2023, which would amend chapter 277 of the Village Code entitled Taxation. They have a new article providing for the collection of a hotel multi-room occupancy tax. Public notice was printed in the Times Hill Record on September 21st, 2023, and we received no written comments. So, I will now go out to the public if anyone has any questions or wishes to speak on this local law at all. Okay, going once, Matt, go ahead.
This is for the hotel motel tax.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Andy, my name is Matthew Barrow, Woodbury. I'd like to speak in favor of the hotel motel tax, and I'd also like to thank our state senator James Stilfis and our assembly, which is leading the village of Woodbury to this bill pass. I think it's going to be very beneficial for our budgets, and, um, we're hoping, we hope, we'll help do less of the burden on local residents, and, uh, you know, increase the amount of, of tax paid by tourists, which is ideal with the planning expansion of the water economy, so, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Yeah, I'll take one.
Yes.
Since we're thanking Senator Stilfis and Sunday Meeke, I think we should also thank you for staying on top of the two of them and getting this passed for both houses, and bringing this revenue to Woodbury, that non-residence has a benefit.
Who's better than this mayor?
I'm just saying.
Just say it to yourself.
You fought for this for quite some time.
Yes, you're so humble.
It should be, it should be recognized that you fought to get this...
I, I would also, listen, the work, the heavy lifting was done by the, the banking. The, the heavy lifting was done by our state senator James Stilfis and the Assemblyman Chris Proseekis. Neither of which live here in Woodbury, and we're all Republicans here, and these are Democrats that did us a huge solid. So politics did not play any part in this whatsoever. It is going to be a good windfall for a municipality that is in desperate need of lots of work within the village of Woodbury for infrastructure and whatnot. So these funds will come in handy, and as I said at the last meeting, will not require us to sell fire alarm t-shirts, or the highway, and the highways, the highway calendar we were talking about doing.
He said it's going to shoot now.
He said it's going to shoot now, yes. So, nobody will have to sell any body parts or fluids or anything else like that, hey. So, that being said, I just completely agree with you on that, that's why...
You're good, you're good. Yeah, that's a thing.
One line too many. Anyone else want to speak on it before I close the public?
I need you to get close.
Okay.
I'm the comedy queen tonight.
Yeah, you go. Hey, listen, nobody's supposed to be funnier than me at these meetings.
Sorry.
It's, it's the one rule I have. All right, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing? Motion, second. All those in favor? You know, I started eating the cookies, but I remember a former supervisor would eat during the meetings, and just, you know, pieces of food.
I don't want to take you.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Okay, can I have a motion in a second now? To, uh, adopt local law thirteen of 2023 entitled Taxation, and to direct the Village Code to copy the law and amend to this meeting? Oh, is that motion? Second. Roll call.
Local law called taxation, or hotel occupancy tax? You called it taxation. I did? We are bending to chapter taxation, oh, nevermind, yes.
Remember you went into, you went into a TP, you had a sweat, and then you came out in eureka, you were like, taxation is the name of this law.
That's the name of the chapter when you're adding a new article.
I, I must have been sweating so much in that TP, I just, I didn't remember.
There you go.
My apologies.
I'm gonna do a roll call, I'm not forgetting here. Trustee Gabrianna.
Aye.
Trustee Morelli.
Aye.
Trustee Björn.
Aye.
Morelli is absent, she's at the Green Bay, and Mayor, Mayor Jacob Mahoney.
Mayor Razzia.
I almost promoted you, Mayor Jacob Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. That is huge. It's one more local law off our plate. All right, couple comments on agenda items only. So in the back of the room is our agenda, so if you have anything you wish to speak on, now would be the time to speak on it. Going once, going twice. So, administrative business, acceptance of minutes, can I please have a motion in a second to accept, receive the minutes of meeting held on September 14th, 2023? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of abstract, uh, Village Board Copman, will you please read abstract eight?
Abstract eight contains abstracts twenty-three, twenty-four, one zero, one nine, twenty-three, twenty-four, eleven, four, seven, and totals three hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, and twenty-seven cents.
All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve the abstract eight as read? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have two fire department equipment requests for this evening to approve. Can I have a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request twenty-seven of 2023, totaling approximately two hundred thirty-three dollars for the calibration of the carbon monoxide meters? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request twenty-eight of 2023, totaling approximately four hundred fifty dollars for new members to attend the CPR AEE training class? Motion? I'll, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, for as long as I can remember, when I was a small little lad as trustee, we have always condensed our meetings down to one meeting in November. So, as usually is the case, one of our meetings falls on Thanksgiving, and the second one is the day after, the day before, and then Wednesday. So, can I have a motion in a second to condense our meetings in November, and hold one meeting on November 14th, 2023, starting at seven thirty P.M.?
Tell me it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, guys, we love those.
Can't do Wednesdays because the meeting in November is being...
Fine.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, acceptance award of bids, cleaning, televising, and sanitary manhole inspections. How exciting. Bid opening was held on September 20th, 2023, for the project cleaning and televising of sanitary sewers and manhole inspections. In a public notice, soliciting for bids was printed in the Times Hill Record. The following bids were received, National Water Maintenance Cleaning Company, ninety thousand, seven hundred, ninety-seven dollars, and fifty cents, and Tan Enterprises was one hundred fourteen thousand dollars, one hundred fourteen, three hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cents. The bids were reviewed by engineer Natalie Barbour, H2M, and attorney Kelly Norton, thank you for that. Both believe that the bids received from National Water Maintenance Cleaning Company is the apparent responsible little bidder, and advise the project to be awarded to them. So, listening to our consultants, because I try not to go against them. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the award, to award the bid to National Water Maintenance Cleaning Company? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And this is all part of the EPA for, for, right? Okay. Schedule a public hearing, introductory local law fifteen of 2023, cannabis. So, can I have a motion in a second, well, we intro, we introduced this law a couple weeks, a couple meetings ago, and as with everything, Attorney Norton was tinkering with it and whatnot, so now we're ready to kind of introduce it. So here we are, we're not introducing, schedule everything, do everything we need to do. So can I have a motion in a second for the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees to send lead agents under secret, this is now? I make the motion, I have a second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Tara, what's your vote?
I can do a roll call.
Yeah, she's aye?
She's aye.
Three of them.
All right, I'll give us, I'll say yes for secret, but I...
Yes for secret, all right.
Thank you.
That's simple enough.
Can I have a motion in a second to type this action to CIGRA, as to type one action?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second now to refer this introductory local law to the Orange County Planning Department, Village Planning Board, the Building Department for comment? And should I add on there, Attorney Norton, should I add in there the Town Board of Woodbury's legal counsel?
Um, yes, the Town Board, and I think the Police Department as well, because they're...
Okay, that's fine.
We're adding Woodbury Town Board.
And the Woodbury Police Department. Can I have a motion in a second for the referrals? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, can I have motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 on October 26th, 2023 to entertain public comment on introductory local law, excuse me, 15 of 2023?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so I have on here, let me start with the discussion on moratorium exemptions. So, I have our Assistant Water Superintendent here with us this evening. We have stolen length, it's Jason Riverhall. Right. It was close. Let him try to pronounce Jack Amos, we get back.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to have a discussion with the board because this well is going to be online by December 1st. Okay, so it will be a start. So, what I'm looking to do, as you know, okay, with that in mind, with the well being online as of that first week, what I want to be able to do is begin the process of moving residential out of the moratorium. We've had this moratorium going on for, what's it been, two years now? Yeah, two years. So, the first well going online should be a huge benefit to us and should allow people that want to build a home or to put an extension on or whatnot to move forward through the process. So, just want to get the trustees' view on it, and then we can decide what to have our attorney move on. So, I don't know if anybody wants to speak first on it. Scott, would you have a second?
That's fine. I'm in favor of releasing, of relieving some of the restrictions on the moratorium with the well coming up online. That's going to just keep things going, it's going to put us in a good place. And hopefully with that second well online soon too.
Okay. CJ?
I don't know anything about that. All right, I think, I'm much more comfortable now that we had this, we got this well through the process and it's being built. So, I'm very comfortable starting to release the restrictions on residential homes. Commercial, not yet. I think we need a second well before we allow the commercial development to continue to move forward because it's such a big border draw. But I don't think we should cancel the residents anymore with single-family homes or extension drain and prolong that process at all. So, I'm comfortable now with this well coming online that we're going to, it's going to bring us back to a level that we can allow residential improvements to move forward without having to be tripped up by just moratorium anymore.
Tara, you have any comments?
I am also in favor of the residential exemptions.
Jason, you want to add anything? How's it going so far with the well 12? I know Mickey has stayed on top of everyone involved to make sure that we're on a certain timeframe, time schedule. So, anything you want to add to this?
Uh, no, I completely agree with the residential stuff moving forward.
Okay. So.
I got my marching orders.
There you go. Resolution on now a local law?
It could probably be a local law.
Okay, okay. So, we'll have that for the October 12th meeting, is that how?
Yeah, we have two for introducing for introduction and then we can set that up here.
Okay. Sounds good. Moving right along and required to say that at every meeting. So, all right. And now comes my favorite part of the meeting, where I'm authorized to sign stuff.
Okay.
And it is an extra item for tonight, renewal of our electric bid supply. So, can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the documents, documentations, that's not even a documentation, with direct energy for electric supply at a rate of 0.088690 for a 12-month period based on the recommendation of our utility consultant, M&amp;R Energy Resources Corporation. Our current contract expires with consolation on October 31st, 2023.
That's supply court.
Yes. Motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we got through this. We got through this together, so I want to thank everybody. Okay? Uh, nobody wrote pastries, but I won't hold that against anybody. Oh, yeah, I did get cookies. Thank you.
Who's your aunt? I'll give you a case of.
I'm not sharing, guys. All right. Public comments, anything you wish to speak on? Maria, you're first.
Good evening, Maria Hunter. I'm taking a green spark walk because it's kind of warm in here. Um, just a quick question on one item. I haven't seen it on Facebook. Is the coattail fundraising still going on like the, on September 30th? Has anyone heard?
Oh, no, 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 it's off.
That's off?
It's off.
Okay. Someone was asking me, so.
Yeah. You know what? I will let Lisa know that she should really put something out there.
Yeah, because.
But there's been, it was canceled and moved to the spring.
Okay, thank you, because someone was asking me, and I'm like, I don't know. I'm not going to be there. Um, a couple of things. We keep on the name with Lisa. She's doing the Reeds Across America.
Yes.
I just want the public to know that on behalf of the Town of Woodbury Memorial Day Parade Committee, we donated $510 to the Reeds Across America. And this whole amount of additional 45 reeds replaced the cemetery in the Highlands this year. So, I just want the public to know that I couldn't do the whole amount, but at least I could get some of it out to it. And Lisa was very appreciative of that.
I said $510?
$510 purchased 45 reeds.
Okay, that's fine.
510. I didn't say 5,000 by the hand.
No. She was right in 5,000.
Oh, no, 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 no. I was only right in 5,000.
Okay.
No, good, yeah.
5,000.
And then, and then the other thing, there's a couple of things here. I know, Mr. Mayor, we've been talking over the weeks. I had a pleasant conversation this morning with Mike Pennella, the building inspector,
Okay.
in regards to an item that was brought up at the chamber meeting on Tuesday. Um, I got information from, from Mike. I left some information at the business today. And I explained certain things, and they go, oh, okay, we can work on that. And I told them, welcome to the neighborhood. And then they have 30 days. And I offered to have the chamber do ribbon cutting for them, so, and to become a member. So, they said if they had any questions, they would call me, and I could relay it back to Mike. So, that was a good positive thing that happened in that meeting. The follow-up to that is regarding the sign law.
As. Yes.
As Mike Pennella and I spoke weeks past, and also this morning in chamber, I know we want to be very involved in law. And I know we spoke with the mayor that you're working with your attorney, Kelly, and we're thinking this law. So, just keep us in mind with the chamber.
Yeah.
We'll graciously, I'll be volunteered to do that. There's no problem. Woodbury Chamber, I'm going to be going on this. Will be hosting our annual trunk retreat at Central Valley Elementary School. Now, remember this. It's on October 31st, Halloween night.
Yes.
I can't, I can't say that enough. It's Halloween night in.
It has to be, Kelly, it has to be specified, it has to be.
I have to specify Halloween night, because it's October 31st. It'll be at the Central Valley Elementary School between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. Last year, we had a great event. We still have about 10 or 12 confirmed people who are going to have trunks there. The children love it. I think we're having a DJ. I'm 100% sure they're doing that this year with their little food truck. And it'll be in the front parking lot across the street from Woodbury Common. We need to have treats for the dogs. People are going to have dogs, and I make sure they get treats. Actually, I know Shabbat will have that. Um, now this next item. I may be in this, I may have missed, missed a meeting or not up to date on this, but the village had a revitalization committee, but they suspended it.
Yes.
I'm asking, was it reinstated for the following reasons? I may have missed a meeting or missed the minutes. Is that currently, there are two town board candidates that have listed that they are members of this committee. I just need to know, is this truthful or is this meeting, this meeting? Because I need to know what's going on with this revitalization committee to keep bumping up there.
Eh, kind of a loaded question. I might take this one. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Um, what candidates do, don't do on a palm park is sort of a bit of our business up here as a group. But what I can say for everybody's benefit is, as of now, as it's been the last few months, the revitalization committee is in a parking hole and we decided that everyone would be more involved. What people put on their palm parks.
Correct, so I didn't miss anything, so it's still on hold. Okay. If that being said, if this board ever decides to re-activate this committee, I'm asking, since I'm currently the chairperson of the beautification committee, think about us, make us liaisons or invite us.
No, but you and I, Maria, have already spoken because some of the projects that I had sort of put on the chairperson to get done never got done. So, one of those projects we just spoke about, so the public knows, which was the arches at Oak Grove.
Yeah.
So, Rob White was, you've got to involve Maria on this. She spearheaded the fundraising efforts. The game plan is to raise it up, raise it a bit, so that the trucks are not hitting it anymore. This, these arches are probably about 100 years old, somewhere in that range.
Well, these, these are brand new arches.
No, but the.
Well, originally, yes, because they're on postcards from a hundred years ago.
Yes.
Which I, those arches were based on that postcard with the original archway that was there.
Okay.
So.
So, we're not looking to tear them down as some candidates have said for office. We are looking to refurbish them, lift them, so they're not getting hit, and then repainting them and just, you know, beautifying.
Yeah.
So, the idea is that you would be involved with that, the beautification committee. I think I went to one of your meetings, you kind of discussed that.
In September.
And I think one of us two as well. So, I want to get that done because we have that money from James Stilfis that we're supposed to be spending. Uh, one of the ideas, I'll just put this out there, one of the ideas that Maria and I did speak about were the light fixtures, which I would have to get approved from a State Senator. But the possibility instead of putting them on Smith Close, um, and not the goose necks, but the other decorative ones.
The lamp.
Is to possibly put them in Victory Park. Victory Park is really just a gazebo and really nothing else. But maybe just enhance that a bit, show us paying attention to something that's also been here for a long time. And it's, I think it's, I think it's a work of art, I think. So.
Listen, I think that's, that's all.
Yeah, so we've got some, we've got some things to work on. But I've already started kind of unwinding.
Thank you. We have quite a few ambitious projects to work on in the next six to 12, 18 months.
Okay. And some of the people that were on that committee, some of the people that were on the committee, we've already kind of moved on to other committees.
Yeah.
So, we've kind of gotten use out of whoever's been there. So, which is good. You know, we've taken the talent that was there and said, okay, listen, we got this. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Anyone else have a comment? Anything? Once, twice.
He's like, oh, look at that.
Oh, is that a, a fresh eye you hear? The foggy at the same time.
Jimmy, I don't know. Excuse me.
Got a full job of Woodbury to be here forever.
Yeah, I need chairs.
Do I get a few more chairs, too?
I've been here a while.
All right.
Okay, so I need a stool. But first off, why don't we have mics?
Because we, this is the microphone now. If you put the microphone in the building with this, the wrong TV, it calls as feedback.
Okay. Because, you know, the real deal, I can't hear you when I sit right there.
Thank you.
So.
I'll shout it now.
Thank you. But first off is, Rob's not here, but I have to shout about. I posted something, Freedom Boulevard, you see a couple of stones. I posted something about it. Rob heard about it, and he sent his crews right out. And this was, you know, we had the rainstorm, we had all this other stuff going on, and Rob's in Boston. When he sent his crew there, he sectioned it all, they handled everything. And, you know, he made it a point reaching out, hey, I got this story. And that was just tremendous.
And let me just stop you there. I am, just to let everybody know, I am legally obligated to even mention how Rob White, from the Highway Department of the Village of Woodbury, is the best in Orange County. So, I'm satisfied, my legal, thank you for allowing.
Yeah, no.
So, go ahead. Go ahead.
Again, so, I had this whole thing prepared to speak about the election and, you know, to meet with people. Because of just everything going on each week. You know what, again, you got, you got retail tax, you got all the positive things going on. I always think of Monroe and Woodbury together. And there's just so many things going on in Monroe, too, that, what is, what is, what is, I can't even remember now. You know what, the ruling palm tree, just, just on and on, there's all these things going on. We hear so much against the negativity on Facebook and everyone else. And it's complaints, you know what? This happened, this happened, this happened. Well, at this point, if things continue to happen, and I don't vote for whether it's on the village board or the town board, the supervisor mayor, I don't vote and control our destiny a little bit, that's on me. I really shouldn't complain. If, if I voted and I did my, did my part, and whoever is in office screws up or makes the wrong decision or that I oppose, at least I tried. But right now is, you know, again, turnout is, was very poor during that Republican, um.
You're telling me?
Yeah. No, no, without that. And it is, even we see with presidential elections, every vote counts. And there's the right guys, the wrong guys, and there's, you know, for the job. It's up to us to find out who the right guys are. And I think, whether it's the village board or the town board, the people sitting in office, we can find out enough about what we stand for by attending the meetings. And I wish more people attended these meetings and watched them and to follow it on, on, you know, on Facebook. Because what you guys do and vote on matters to us. I mean, and that's just, that's just a fact. I mean, my issue is that, you know what, there's always other candidates running. I see a lot of signs on the road. I can't vote for signs.
Yeah.
It's, it's like voting for SpongeBob, basically. I mean, it's, so, what is the way to find out what these candidates stand for? It's, it's, it's a tough process. You know, it, it is, you can't be voting for signs. It, it, it's the same sign. You just, you know, white on names, you can, you know, Joe Smith. It's a sign. I just wish what goes on and what your efforts and your deeds, whether you're doing good or bad, okay, and some decisions, you know, here and on town board, are the wrong ones to me. People have to find out. I have a lot more to say. I just found out something's posted on, again, a Facebook thing, you know, fanbase of Wood, Woodbury, that I want to know more about. But I think anyone who's concerned about Woodbury should look there. And that's really what it is, it's like, if we don't fight for Woodbury, you know, what, what will happen, we're gonna regret this again. In many ways, you know, and I, I understand, I told our user, my item is Marie Richardson. This young woman started a movement, preserve Monroe. She bought that dinosaur heart, goodbye. She's so vocal as far as preserving Monroe. And she's at forefront of every effort to save, preserve what I think everybody in this room wants. And again, it's like, I wish we had that person in Woodbury. You know, I just tried to vote every town meeting, every village meeting, spewing the same nonsense, like, you know what? Let's, let's, let's fight for this. And, and really is, so far, I have not heard you guys and generally most of the town board do things that are detrimental to Woodbury. And, and I thank you for that. But I also can't say it's not, it's not one hundred percent. Not everybody is about preserving Woodbury, saving Woodbury. And I would hate to see the wrong person get elected because of the math. Low numbers can slide by, we've seen that. And that's what I'm nervous about. I hope whoever hears me, watches these meetings or whatever, if you're not registered to vote, register to vote. If you know somebody who's not registered, get them to register. You know what, I'm a hypocrite, I never voted in an election until I got here. And I just wasn't specifically involved. But here, it is, at these meetings, you see what's going on. You see the citizens speaking up, they come in and they have a voice. You got Maria, who knows everything that's going on. But it's, it's everyone else who needs to get involved. It's, it's just getting involved, getting informed, and trying to, you know, preserve what, what this is about, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anything at all?
Yeah.
Oh, there's it, speaking it out. Ladies and gentlemen, I am.
You missed the video.
You missed your kudos tonight, though.
I thought you were ready, because I, you got it. Wow.
Oh, you're gonna get a hug now. Give him a hug. You're gonna see, hug it out. Alright, come on.
Yes, sir. I just want to know, uh, maybe I'm at the wrong board because there is two boards in this now, but, um, traffic on Dunberg Road and Summit Avenue is, you know, sometimes you take your life in your hands when you're momentarily on over there, and you're halfway up the lawn, uh, because it's a three-way stop sign. Alright, for that intersection here, I was wondering who I would, could approach and see that that becomes a four-way stop sign. Alright, so, simple, simple as that, alright? And then more signage needs to be put on Summit Avenue because you got a traffic circle or a road re, whatever you want to call it, another thousand feet up the road. And you got buses making, you know, deciding that they don't want to go around the right way, they go down the roadway and they, they, um, go into head-on traffic, which was me and my granddaughter. Alright, almost striking me one night.
Can we, can Rob, can we look into, I, I know exactly where he's talking about.
I guess I gave you the right time.
Yeah. I know, but I, I think the answer is regardless.
So as far as the stop.
Westerville, maybe, or coming by the west.
As far as the stop sign, we'd have to create a resolution to put a stop sign coming up the hill, because that's always through traffic coming up.
Not a big deal.
So, and then also, as far as the one-way sign, I actually got a phone reminder today, there isn't a one-way sign at the top, so I'm gonna get on the phone at some point tomorrow in between the raindrops and, uh, speak to Sergeant Russo and see if we can maybe get a little police presence up there.
But, you know, certain vehicles in the door.
I understand.
I mean, the other day was a yellow, pink yellow school bus.
Yeah.
And he just did not.
I know they took it, I know they took it a couple of buses.
Well, that would get, that, I find out later on, but this was, no, I got my granddaughter.
I understand.
And she's free and she's saying to me, why is that bus there?
I'll, I'll reach out to her at least tomorrow.
And, uh, but, you know, I mean, just a sign, a giraffe over there.
Yeah.
And it just means, I think, these vehicles, alright?
We will, we'll get it.
Do I have to make that resolution of?
No, no, no.
Something we, alright.
Tell me what you hear.
Alright, thank you, guys.
That's why you pay us the big bucks.
Yes.
That's, that's the seashells, by the way.
Anybody else?
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Going once, going twice. Public comments. Jason, I'll start with you. Thank you for coming on tonight, by the way.
No problem at all, I have no comment, though, thank you.
Alright, Mike Pennella?
I got nothing tonight, thank you.
And Roberto, White?
I just want to, you know, I, I would say there's a big storm coming tomorrow, so I just wanted everyone to be prepared. Expect flooding because it's probably gonna happen. Um, two to four inches of rain tomorrow, so just backing down the hatches and do the best you can.
All day event or is it really just gonna hit us?
All that.
Okay.
So just be prepared, there will be covered roads, turn around, don't drown.
Okay. This is what I get for praying for rain for all summer?
Yeah.
Right, with all the water restrictions, and now I've got too much water.
Tell me.
Too much water.
Yeah.
Alright, Rob, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, moving on to the board, Tara Bjurk, I'll start with you since you're working from your vacation home, Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Alright, thank you. CJ? Alright, can you hear me guys really better?
I can hear you.
I will project.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I was, was to talk softly, carry the stick, but I will, I'll leave the stick at home and talk later.
There you go.
Um, first of all, thank you, everybody, and, you know, the couple of things that I've heard over the last few weeks and months is, you know, talking about preserving things, but we have to also understand who we're preserving things for, and we have to preserve things for everyone. And, you know, there's an, there's art, one of the biggest things that drew me here and, and one of the reasons why I stay here is diversity of our community. So when we preserve things, we have to preserve things for everybody, and I think we, we, we do a pretty good job of that as a board. You know, I got involved in doing this because I have knowledge and skill that I want to share with the rest of the village in, in the water and sewer industry, and, and that's something that we do do. So I continue to want to volunteer that, but we just have to realize that we can't preserve something, there's history, we should preserve history, but we can't preserve a town and, and get it, make it stuck in the nineteen fifties either. We have to preserve it for everybody and preserve it for everybody and take into consideration everybody's wants and needs, because I think everybody that moves here has the same general principles in the back of their head. They want a lawn, they want a place for the children to run around and play, they don't want to be in a city environment, and we can do that together as, as a group and as a board and as a town, but we have to understand that because we have a very diversified peo, people that live here in Woodbury. And, and that's a very good thing, so when we say preserve, we have to be careful with that word and understand what we're preserving and why we're doing it, and, and you know, I would love to preserve open spaces, that's something that we've really worked upon here, is to leave some open space. Um, we're gonna preserve our historical buildings and try, the arches is another example, preserve some of the history of Woodbury. But we also have to understand that we have to allow for change. So you can preserve things, preserve a lifestyle, but we have to allow for, let that lifestyle to evolve as we go forward. So I want to make everybody kind of understand that, and that's the way it's gonna be when you're in a diversified community, and so we have to work together and allow that to happen, but we can do both. I think we can preserve the charm of Woodbury without excluding anybody from that charm. That's kind of what I'm saying, and I think to make it more inclusive and to work together and, and that will, in and of itself, work to preserve our wonderful village and that I recall, so that's what I gotta say tonight. Be safe, um, with this weather tomorrow, like, we have nowhere to put water, there's, drainages are clogged, it, it's Robin and his crew have done a wonderful job and it just, there's nowhere for the water to go anymore at this point, so you know, these storms keep coming like this, everybody be very, very careful, as Rob said, and we'll get through it again, and hopefully Elmenio, whatever the hell you're calling this thing, goes away and we don't get sixteen feet of snow, this, this, whatever, this keeps going on like this. That, that's what I have tonight, thank you very much, and does everybody take a beat in the box? Alright, trustee, that's enough, thank you. Trustee Porelli? Thank you.
Um, I just want to remind you of the couple of fundraisers that are coming up, that I mentioned last meeting on October thirteenth, we have the ladies auxiliaries holding their boom, boombox bingo. And, um, Tricky Trey, and on Friday, November tenth, the Woodbury Police and the Woodbury PBA are holding a luxury pocketbook bingo. Both events to be held at St. Patrick's, Jim.
And that's all, really, that's it. Alright, that's right? Good? Alright, she's got a great big Packers game on, that's who Soriano's at, so, those are these. Choppin' up. But I think the game of Twister would be perfect right about now, so. Anyway, I have nothing for this evening, I, I just want everybody to be safe tonight, uh, tomorrow. Yes, we have more rain coming in, I want to thank both my water sewer department and my fire department volunteers and of course, Robin and his crew, who will be getting themselves drenched tomorrow and risking the flu out there to make sure that we can get where we gotta go. So, do us a favor, just stay off the roads if necessary, which allows our first responders, like Tom in the back, to do what they need to do and allows our crews to do what they need to do. Okay, without further business, more comments received, can I have motion and second to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next meeting of the village board will be October twelfth. Until then, we're very good to yourselves and each other.